Calling this meeting back to order. Announcement of action.
Recording in progress.
Oh, calling this meeting back to order. Announcement of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Pritchett. There are three announcements coming out of closed session. The Board approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2021010068 by a unanimous vote of those members present, 5-0. The Board approved a second special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2021030598, again by unanimous vote of those members present, 5-0. And finally, the Board approved a third special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2021010160 by a unanimous vote of those members present, 5-0. And that is all.
Great, thank you. Item 6.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item 6.1, approve ABSB 86, Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan Adoption. Good evening, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, Board Member Pritchett, Board Members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris. I'm the Chief of Continuous Improvement and Accountability here for Sacramento City Unified School District. It's my privilege tonight to present for adoption our Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. What's really important to note about this is that as with, you know, special opportunities like this with one-time funding, we've had a lot of opportunities to get input. We've looked at old plans. We've actually had a strong cross-department effort, including our Grants Office, our LCAP team, our Academic Office, of course, Student Support Services, and Health Services, Youth Development, and our Fiscal Team. So as we brought this plan together, even though it was a full sprint, because of course we were just made aware of it in March, we've done everything our possible to seek out as much input as conceivable within this period. I will say upfront, obviously with a plan that's done this quickly, we know that there are some of the projects have a little bit more gaps to them, so there's variation. But tonight, I'm proud to share what we've got in terms of what we believe is a viable plan, knowing that we'll be evolving it over time. And you'll hear more specific concretes about the plan in terms of a couple of special initiatives that a couple of my colleagues will be presenting on through this presentation. So with that, I'll go ahead and dive in. So our filter remains what we always talk about in our Board meetings and in our district overall, is really looking at our core value and our guiding principle. And so as we thought about what initiatives to include, a lot of it came down to what are the things that actually will disrupt the inequities that we see exist? And then, of course, what helps us fulfill the promise to the guiding principle, really thinking about things that support our students? And also ultimately, because of the earmarks of this grant, really thinking about how do we disrupt the potential learning mitigation or learning loss that we know our students have experienced in the course of the pandemic? And it makes sure we're putting in the best-practice things that we're aware of. So there's urgency in tonight's presentation. All of your awareness, this grant actually has to be Board adopted into our County Office of Education by June 1st. So obviously, tonight, we're giving you our best thinking, knowing that we're going to be evolving this over time as we get better information. But we will be giving you our best thinking this evening in terms of those things that we think will make the difference for our students with the goal of meeting the June 1st deadline, because that's established by Assembly Bill 86. And then, of course, as we talked in terms of the plan itself, you know, we look to implement it, of course, over the next year up through next summer. And then, of course, we'll be bringing back updates in terms of the expenditures, updates in terms of the plan itself and the impact of it. So this is the legislative authority for the plan. And again, you know, to reemphasize, this is a part of Assembly Bill 86, the COVID release package. And then, of course, just kind of an echo chamber from a prior point, that we need to have the plan adopted by June 1st in order to be eligible for the funding. So as we think about the funding, it really is a significant opportunity for us in terms of as it splits into this in-person instructional piece, which I know our CBO, Real Zollis, has given you a heads-up on previously, the 13.4 million. And then we'll talk a little bit more, obviously, tonight about the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant, which is about the 20, just under 29 million, as we've thought about, you know, what are those plans that make the difference for our students and as a staff we think are effective to implement? Again, as we think about resources, it's always important to note, we are always striving to make sure our resources are driven by student need. And so the goal of this graphic is just to ensure alignment as we think about our planning processes. In this context, it's a unique plan that actually has been running concurrently with our LCAP process, but really, we've tried to apply the same principles, this notion of looking at our student need base, having that then drive our planning processes as we aspire to do that with our local control accountability plan and with our school plans for student achievement. So is the same with our Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, is really thinking through how student priorities drive our actual spending. So as we think about the grant itself, obviously, it's heavy, right? The good news is, it's heavy in the context of there's lots to be covered by it. So as we think about, you know, all the key initiatives listed here, none of them are any more necessarily more important than the other. But certainly, as we think about our reality, accelerating progress to close learning gaps, we know has been a big theme, and you'll see that also in the community feedback as well, but also supports for credit-deficient students. And then frankly, this notion of how do we support all of our students, the whole child framework? So you'll see elements of that in the plan. When we think about the student groups, they are student groups that we always talk about, how do we accelerate achievement for? Specifically, as we think about our district overall, low income, our foster youth, students experiencing homelessness, but also the last bullet speaks to this notion of the students we want to really target as well, in terms of students who are below grade level, and ultimately really look to resolve and start mitigating some of the learning loss that we know has been a significant issue this school year. And to some degree, speaking of prior presentations to the Board, we know that overall, our system has struggled with helping all of our students, particularly those who are below grade level. So we recognize that this isn't just a COVID item, it's a systemic challenge that we're looking to tackle head-on. Uh-oh, what did I do? There we go. Operator error. All right, at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Mr. Adrian Vargas, and he'll take you through the fiscal pieces.
All right, thank you, Vincent. Can you go to the previous slide?
That's right. There we go. There we go. Right there. There we go, finally.
So I just want to review a couple of fiscal requirements related to the ELO grant. The first one is that at least 85% of the expenditures must be used to provide in-person services for any of the seven purposes that were previously described and will be talked about in some future slides. And then the second requirement is at least 10% of the award allocation must be used to hire a pair of professionals, provide supplemental instruction and support with priority for full-time pair of professionals, and a priority to service our English learners and students with disabilities. Next slide, please. And then here is the seven areas and the planned expenditures for each. And as I stated, and as Vincent mentioned, this is developed in coordination and working with the instructional side, and they will talk more in depth about each area. But based on our conversations and the things that are happening with our Summer Matters program, this is how we came up with these estimates. All right, back to you, Vincent.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vargas. And so again, stakeholder engagement has been important. I'll just say upfront, because of the sprint of this, we know that we haven't necessarily been able to hear from all of our stakeholders as we would like. But what's important to note is that we did look to integrate the stakeholder engagement as much as we could. So we do an annual LCAP survey. We integrate questions along the ELO in our LCAP survey. We had a unique partnership with the Parent Institute for Quality Education, or PK, and so that became another strand during our sprint and listening sessions, we included questions about it. And we'll, of course, continue ongoing feedback from stakeholders as we implement the plan, because we recognize that you can't have too much feedback, because ultimately, that helps us shape a more targeted and more focused plan. So what do we hear from some of our stakeholders? And really, many of the themes are themes you've heard before. Many of the themes that we know as a system are the things that our community cares about. You know, ultimately, I'll just highlight two, because we've talked most recently about them, in the context of, you know, really thinking about our summer enrichment or summer programming really being engaging, fun, providing opportunities. And you've seen how we've used that feedback to rethink our summer programming, and that we initially had a much more academic-oriented programming. And as we got feedback and best practices from other research practitioners, we've reformed it to be in alignment with what we know folks more desire. And then, of course, you know, second bullet from the bottom speaks to this notion of, it's not just about the academics for our students, but the whole child frame really speaks to addressing social-emotional learning needs. And so those are really the two big themes that we'll highlight this evening with district staff leaders, who'll talk you through some of the initiatives that directly speak to those two elements. And then, as I mentioned, we had a unique partnership in this journey with PK, which was a great opportunity for us to try and expand the base. Again, we had a sprint, so in any kind of sprint, we're trying to get all hands on deck to support us. And you can see here, I mean, many of the family input that they received spoke to many of the things that we care about as a system, the notion of academic supports and preparation, tutoring, one-on-one supports, and then, of course, again, back to the social-emotional needs of our students and families. And then here, really, to a large degree, because all the percentages are so high, it really speaks to everything's really important for us. And so as you look at the heaviness of the plan, we really are trying to do what we can to be strategic, but also recognize that this feedback is a call to action for us to operate on many levels. And so we are doing kind of the feasibility test for the things that we're doing, but we're looking to try and resolve as many things as we can, because we know this unique one-time funding does give us the opportunity to expand capacity in strategic ways and thoughtful ways. And so that's what we're trying to do with this plan as well. Prioritized group I've spoken to, so you see them listed again. And maybe I'll talk a little bit more about how we are identifying students. And this is really important, because this gives us an opportunity to leverage resources we already have. Our early identification intervention system allows us to take a multiple-measure approach to identifying students. But equally important, we have the opportunity to collaborate with our various departments who are in direct service to students, so that we can make sure that even if students don't necessarily fit the math of an early identification or intervention system, we still have the ability to reach those students as well. And obviously, we've seen that model play out in many of the things that we've done during the pandemic, the classroom collapse as well. We've seen this notion of getting the local context is really important. And of course, we've talked about the importance of the assessments that we have underway and using those as another tool for us to identify students. And our communications team continues to do its great work in terms of how we'll push out messaging. This just highlights some of the channels that you are very familiar with in terms of our e-connection and our various channels through site newsletters, as well as our district work, and then, of course, using the telephone system as well. One of the things they did call out was this notion of how are we going to communicate? So our communications team already has significant infrastructure to help us support in that process. So at this point, I'm actually going to turn it over to our Director of Youth Development. We'll give you a kind of a more deep, robust view of one of our big initiatives in this plan, our summer programming.
The respected Board President, honorable Board Members, and dear Superintendent, I am Man Pete, Director of Youth Development. So today, I'm going to talk about summer, summer 2021. So this summer 2021 will focus on relationships. We are going to have ample adults present at each site, and all the student enrichment activities will give ample opportunities to our students to build a relationship with students and to build relationships with adults and having those trusting relationships. Staff will focus on more on community agreements in order to address any discipline issues. And there will be no punitive disciplinary actions. Addressing mental health. So we are collaborating with our Student Support Services, and we will be hiring social workers. These social workers will go and do welfare check-ins from site to site, and then they will also train staff on social-emotional learning, and they will do check-ins and do some circle times with the students on their social-emotional health. And we are not only focusing on the social-emotional health of just for our students, but also the social workers will do check-ins with the staff, too. Along with mental health, we will be focusing on, we are very careful about students' physical health. We know that COVID is still a reality. We will be hiring medical assistants who will be helping our school sites and our students to stay safe, which will present, their presence will make sure that our students feel safe at sites. Connecting with the families and communities, this is one of our objectives this year. Every Friday, we are requiring all of our community partners to do a check-in night with our parents. So every Friday, there will be time designated for families to do a check-in. All of our community partners will be required to do two orientations during the month of June 21st, so that they know what parents want, what are some of the expectations, and how to reach out to our families whenever there is a need, and how families can reach out to our staff when they need something or need any information. High dosage of tutoring, this is one of the highlights of our programming. We have posted petitions for teachers for bilingual aides, and these teachers and bilingual aides will work with our students in small groups. Next slide, please. And depending on the site needs and capacity, these activities can look different from site to site. So we will be focusing on academics, P E, our dance music system. Some of the providers that we are contracting with are Northern California School of Arts, Sacramento Theater Company, Studio T, Sucker USA, Street Sucker USA. They will focus on enrichment activities. High doses tutoring sessions will be with students, as I mentioned earlier, our academic department. They will train our teachers and bilingual aides, and teachers will be focusing on reading in grades K through 3, and then focusing on English Language Arts in grades 4 through 6. And our focus in middle school will be math. All teachers will receive their own individual kits to work with students in small groups. And next, I'm going to talk about middle school program, students. At middle schools, our focus will be math, and we will be having teachers and bilingual aides at middle schools, too. We are also contracting with the Bay Area provider, the name is Startup Smart App. So students will learn how to be, how to start a business. This program is regarding entrepreneurship. So students will start a business or idea of a business, then they will compete in a short, short chain kind of competition and at the school level, and then in between different school sites, five middle school sites. This program, they can take it to their next school year, too, because the company has agreed to provide the license to our students. So this program is not for the whole year. This program is not just entrepreneurship, but also web designing and coding. Online credit recovery for our high school students in a summer ambassadors, sorry. This is one of our beloved programs. So when we open the application for summer ambassadors, we have been doing this program for the last 10 years, but this year is the first year, then we will be paying our students $14 an hour. So when we opened the application for our high school students, within three days, we have 102 applications, and we just closed the application. Out of those 182 applicants, we selected 120 to interview. And then out of those 120, we selected 76 students to be our summer ambassadors during summertime. We are, right now, we are in the process of getting the applications complete. We are very excited about this program, and we are going to get that training done from people reaching out, and also we, and some, we will be teaching our students what it is like to have a job and how it is important to be responsible at a job. Online credit recovery for high school students, we will be doing at all of our high schools, there will be ample opportunities for students to do, to complete their credit recovery courses, so they can graduate on time. High schools will also be doing ninth and 10th grade bridge programs. We all know some of our incoming 10th graders, they haven't set a foot at their school campuses. So this program will give an opportunity and introduce them, their school sites to them. Math and Advanced Placement Success Camps. Number of our school sites will be offering Advanced Placement Courses to our students. Freedom School. And Freedom School, we have been doing this for the last six, six to seven years. This year, it will be at four of our elementary and K-8 sites. We are very excited about this program as always. This program, the training will be done for the staff, and it's being done right now by Children's Defense Fund, and curriculum is provided by Children's Defense Fund. This program is rooted in civil rights movement. Summer at City Hall, we have been doing this for the last six, seven years, and this year again, we have hired three of our SCUSD teachers who will work with, collaborate with City Hall. And not only they will work with our SAC City Unified Students, but also students from Twin Rivers and Nuthomas. Arts-based enrichment, we are, in order to provide ample opportunities to our students, we are also collaborating with SCOE at one of our K-8 sites. And SCOE has hired artists who will be working with our students at the school site, and all the staff is contracted by SCOE. This is our first time collaborating with SCOE for an art-based enrichment camp, and we are very excited about this. Extended school year, this ESY is for those students, students with disability and students with some, with special needs. In order, we are being very intentional about full inclusion this year. ESY and Summer Matters at three of the sites, both will co-engage. And the reasoning behind that is that we want to make sure that we give opportunities to our students who are a part of ESY, but when they are done at 11:30, then they will have the opportunity to come and mingle with other students who are in Summer Matters and participate in those enrichment activities, because we want to give them the opportunity to have fun, do some arts enrichment, and participate in physical activities. And now, I will hand over back to our Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. And really, what key takeaway to take away from this presentation is the through line. So even though it's one-time funding, because the extension of the one-time period actually crosses over school years, we actually have an opportunity to create themes. And so you'll see some of the themes under Accelerating Progress speak to now the kind of the school year opportunities we have. So high-dose tutoring can continue as a part of our school year, arts program obviously can continue as part of our school year. You see the third bullet, which gets the capacity building, the ability to launch a teacher intern program. Of course, some of these things are more developed than others, but we're excited about the opportunity to build human capacity as well, because that gives us a boost for our system and obviously can help us support the targeted students for this grant. And then, as we think about extending time, opportunity to extend after-school tutoring, which again, you're hearing this theme of dosage and tutoring as a reoccurring theme. And then the bottom bullet gets to the work that we already have underway in terms of expanding of our expanded learning programs. Really gives us an opportunity to go deeper for some period with this funding to help us, again, build out more supports across the system and more sites, serving more students. Is that, actually, I'm going to turn the presentation over? Let's see. No, I, yep, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our Director of Student Support and Health Services, this Victoria Flores.
Good evening. And so tonight, I'm going to talk about some of the integrated supports that this plan is outlining and covering. And so all of these items tonight that I'll speak about are really broad categories in service to our students and our families' needs, as Mr. Harris, Chief Harris, highlighted and looking at EIS and some of those other systems that we have. And this is really around better equipping our staff to provide healing-centered, strengths-based, culturally-relevant supports and services. And this is really in some of the categories you're going to see, our student safety, parent engagement, youth-centered services. These are all items that we've heard our students, as well as our parents and guardians, community partners, and community advocates ask for, and we saw that reflected in those PK surveys. So I'll just quickly take you through a few of these big, broad areas. We're looking at suicide prevention, and the Board, you know, adopted our revised plan at our last meeting, and we want to continue to deepen our work, particularly around our students and our staff. Cognito has been a very successful online, self-paced, kind of choose-your-own-adventure about how to support your friends and how to respond in a situation where you're worried about someone. Of course, our beloved Men's and Women's Leadership Academy, this falls with our Youth Development Team, looking to expand to five high school sites. This is a wonderful opportunity for youth leadership, youth development, and really helping our young people see themselves and see their pathways. I can just attest, my own child has participated, and it was a very powerful experience. Next slide, please. And you're going to see, and this, this might, you might pause on this one, but enhanced communication vehicles. You know, and when we had to pivot to distance learning, we quickly got cell phones out to our support staff, because we knew we needed a way to reach our families. And texting has just been wildly successful with both our students and our families, times where they might not want to pick up the phone or even answer an email, but they'll have a 45-minute session via text. And this is us really being responsive to what our students and our families are asking for and responding to. And then this one, I know, is near and dear to many of our hearts, but we're looking at a near-peer mental health and wellness support and youth workforce development. So we've been in discussion and partnership with Pro Youth and Families and Youth Forward for some time, so we're actually seeing these ideas, you know, come to fruition, where we're going to be looking at having a near-peer mentorship model with specific focus on youth of color and youth who identify as LGBTQ+, so that our young people see themselves and near-peer young people on their campuses as that bridge to discuss wellness and health and positive, healthy coping. And then, of course, that youth mental health, youth mental wellness workforce development project for our actual SAC City students. And so we really believe that this partnership will really expand the range of mental health supports available to our students that really promote and support well-being. Next slide, please. And then, of course, we're going to be expanding our social-emotional learning and training we know has been so successful and foundational for building that positive school climate, as well as healing-centered, trauma-informed training that's provided by our support staff to our school staff and our parents, really looking at that meaningful parent engagement strategies with our face department and all of the tools and the resources that they have to provide to our families. Our department has undergone some healing-centered engagement training this year with Florish Agenda, that's Dr. Jenwright's group, really looking to strengthen our own internal practices as we serve everyone in our community. So we'll, we'll take that work even further next year. And then, of course, that suicide prevention, Cognito, online modules for our staff as well, which is so important that they know how to recognize and respond to crisis. It's a colleague, a family member, or even a student. And I'll pass it back over to Chief Harris.
As we wrap up the presentation, this gets you a finals portfolio of, again, strong supports that are really meant to build capacity for staff. And so mindfulness training, obviously, we think about the context in which we're coming back out of a pandemic into the world of what a new normal is. We know that this is really important for all of us, students, staff, community members, families. And focusing on our foster youth, really recognizing, as we think about accelerating achievement for one of our groups that has had some of the lowest academic performance measures, we know that we have to be intentional about building capacity to build on the great work that's already underway, but to accelerate, knowing we can't do enough to support our foster youth team, the mighty team that we have in place there. And of course, our heroes, our school nurses over the last year, have been on the front lines of resolving the pandemic, and certainly, as we think about, you know, their role back at school sites, as much as they've been on the front lines of the pandemic, also giving them capacity, strength in addressing the social, emotional, and health and academic needs via conferences. And then finally, we have an opportunity to do more of a whole-family engagement opportunity. And so as you think about the ideas that we've presented this evening and the context of the work, it really is about the whole system, building academic supports. You've heard in many of the slides, the notion of tutoring, high-dosis tutoring. You've also heard this notion of what does it mean to build capacity for the adults that serve our students? And so that's been many of the key themes that you've heard this evening. As we wrap up and just reinforce the kind of administrative aspects of this, you know, our dependent charters, we normally, of course, include their paperwork along with the district, because of course, our dependent charters are their own LEAs, but of course, as dependent charters, they basically, to a large degree, follow the guidance of the district itself. And then just bring you back to the timeline, tonight is our opportunity, hopefully, for Board adoption, got to be adopted by June 1st, so that we can get it to the county office, where they don't have an authority role of approving, but there is by mandate, they have to have our Board adopted version of the plan by June 1st. And then, of course, really, the heart and soul of this will be the implementation. And so we'll have an ongoing basis come back with updates, because the reality of, as I mentioned at the beginning, there is some variation in the projects, because this was a sprint. And so in some respects, as you heard from our colleagues this evening, some things are pretty well-defined, other things we're defining. And there may be other things we decide as we define things to change a little bit. So we recognize that as we implement, we'll be coming back to you with updates. And of course, obviously, the final resolution of the spending will come in the expenditure of the grant funds and the update, of course, to include the actual expenditures. You know, just as a point of reference, I will do a quick shout-out to our grant writer, Diane Brown, and our LCAP chief coordinator, Stephen Ramirez-Fong, who actually were the backbone to write all this up. And of course, obviously, as I mentioned earlier, the host of departments, he contributed. So obviously, not a perfect plan, because we just found out about it in March. That's not an excuse, I'm just trying to give context. But one thing I will say, that when you hear about the LCAP in the next Board meeting, you will know symmetry, right? We're looking to create intersections that make sense, and we're looking to give an echo chamber to those things that we think are important for our system. And that's really one of the efforts that we really tried to do with this plan effectively. With that, I'll end the presentation and turn it over to the Board.
Thank you. I believe we have five live public comments on this agenda topic.
First up is Manuel Jimenez. Nicole Malevsky. Sarah Kingsley and Renee Webster-Hawkins are giving their time to Angie Sutherland. Sarah Kingsley and Renee Webster Hawkins are giving their time to Angie Sutherland.
Hello. I am Angie Sutherland and I'm combining my time with Sarah Williams Kingsley and Renee Webster Hawkins on behalf of the Coalition for Students with Disabilities. So it appears that students with disabilities are one of the targeted focus groups for this program. With, with respect to student identification and needs assessment, how will all students with disabilities be identified and assessed? In a fall survey that we did for parents, um, we heard from parents of students with disabilities who attend general ed classes, special day classes and non-public schools. And seventy-one percent of students said they did not receive their special education services in the fall. Ninety-one percent of parents said the special education service delivery was not well-suited to their child's needs. Fifty-seven percent said that their students did not have individualized transition plans, even though they were due. And this is for high school and, or middle school and high school students. And forty-three percent said that their plan, transition plans were not implemented appropriately. And if this is indicative of the larger population of students with disabilities, the district has some work to do to make things right for students. To meet the testing requirements, um, the district is using iReady. Not sure if special day classes are also using iReady, if not, how, there's a concern with how the progress will be measured. Because special education goals are measured by the special education teachers and service providers. But students with I E Ps are general ed students first, and therefore their teachers should have access to iReady also. Also, with regard to, one moment. With, with regard to how parents are going to be informed of the opportunities for these programs, communication in Sac City has not been ideal, especially for special education. It's very siloed. In our fall survey, thirty, thirty-eight percent of parents said they received insufficient communications from their I E T P teams. And seventy-six percent said they received no communication from the district about school resources that would support their children, child with a disability. So how will this time be different? How will parents know of the options that exist for their students with disabilities? Will all the students receive information about options in order to make informed decisions? Or will the parents of students with disabilities only be told about extended school year, AKA E S Y? The focus on relationships is also mentioned as a key pillar. Schools have not been a safe place for many students with disabilities who face bullying and a lack of acceptance and support. How will this be different than in the past to create this safe space? Addressing mental health is also another pillar and holding circles to address wellbeing, safety and trauma could be disastrous for a student who shares their issues or seeks to resolve a problem in a peer group without a trained facilitator. So we hope that the school sites will be supported with professionals trained to facilitate these sensitive conversations. Also, high dosage tutoring is listed, but what does that look like? What is the methodology? Hopefully it is not the status quo reading and math methods that have not shown to close achievement gaps in our district. We're hopeful that the high dosage tutoring services go beyond typical instruction, that it, that is not designed to close achievement gaps, but instead are multi-sensory and explicitly designed to meet the needs of students who have difficulty with reading, spelling and writing, who are at the low grade level and are struggling. With regard to all the different activities planned at very site to site, is there a list of which programs will be provided at each site so parents can make informed decisions? Will students with disabilities be afforded these opportunities? Extended school year is listed as a program for students with disabilities, but E S Y is not the only game in town. However, parents have traditionally not received information about all of the available options. Worse, E S Y has not closed achievement gaps. Parents need to be able to understand and weigh in on appropriate options. It was mentioned by the presenter that students in E S Y would coexist with other students in summer matters and only interact after eleven thirty. Why is there not a blended E S Y program or one with co-teaching? This is separate and not equal. And one of the integrative supports is the near peer mental health. And what a wonderful idea. Many students with disabilities also have mental health needs. And in fact, in a survey, the survey that we did in the fall, seventy percent of parents said that their students' educationally related mental health services was not implemented appropriately. Eighty percent said their children are developing new mental health issues, but not receiving any support. And fifty percent said their children are regressing in learning and behavior. So has the district determined that this partnership would not also be beneficial to students with disabilities? We ask that you please consider expanding these opportunities to serve students with disabilities who also need this support. And lastly, it's very refreshing to see some family engagement activities are being planned with FACE. The accessibility of these programs needs to be looked at since many parents are unable to come to in-person or online meetings. Personalized outreach to families with this information would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland.
There are no more public comments.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up for board discussion questions.
President Bridget, I just want to just acknowledge, um, Mr. Harris spoke about this and just thank all of the staff that have been working toward bringing this to the board for your consideration. I know that often we are working as hard as we can and sometimes it feels like we are not giving enough time for our community. But I just want to ask that you trust that our staff have been working diligently to complete this task and, uh, and, and this is our best proposal for the board's consideration. I also want to just thank again, uh, the ad hoc committee that the board put together led by members Garcia and including, uh, member, uh, member Rhodes and, and student board member Shake. We did ask for a speedy turnaround in order to incorporate some of those findings. And, and, and I think that's a valuable addition to this plan and, and hope that the board will also trust Mr. Harris's sort of front load to the board that you'll see some of this in the L cap plan that is being finalized as well. So thanks, thank you, Mr. Harris and all the staff that have been involved.
Yes, thank you. I, I will open it up. I, I guess I can, I can start if you want to start. Go ahead.
Just, we're going in circles and niceties. So I do, I do want to thank staff. I know this was a very compressed timeline, so, um, so, um, I, I noticed, I, I guess I don't want it to go unnoticed that you really, you really took advantage of sort of where you are at in other processes to, to really create those opportunities to, to get stakeholder input. So I, I just, I just want to recognize that because I know it's, it's a lot of work. And, um, and, and thank you, um, superintendent for also highlighting that the valuable input from, you know, our partnership with B K, especially from voices that we normally don't hear from, was also very valuable as it was meant to be. It was to add value to the process. I do have a few questions, however. I think there's similar to some of the comments that we heard in terms of the students being identified through the early identification, identification and intervention system. So that seems like the, the district, that identification will be at the district level. I'm wondering if there is going to be another sort of identification at the school site level. So a teacher that is identifying a student that could benefit from some of these services, how, how does that, how do those two work? In case there's not a match, right? The same student is not identified by the, by the system.
I mean, to your question, Borja Garcia, I'll start and let another, another member of the team speak to it if, if, if I leave out anything of importance. But you know, as we looked at slide sixteen, to your point completely, that is where the collaboration is meant to happen. And so in various district processes, what we end up doing is publishing a list and ultimately working with site administrators who see the list, they come back and say, hey, you, you may have missed somebody we think is important. It's kind of an iterative process. So the lists that we create are not necessarily imposed as the truth. They're imposed as a first cut because it is data rich. But to your point completely, we, we actually do build in processes where principals will come back to us to say, you know, this student appears to be someone who would benefit and we do open up opportunities, especially with the context of this program being so locally based. Exactly to your point, we don't want to miss any student that a principal or teacher informs that should be a participant. So, so it's a two-step process. E I S is our way to look at things at a scalable level across the system. And then as we publish that information, then we do get site input on, on things to consider in terms of additional students.
Excellent. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, students.
Member Garcia, if I can just interject, um, as you know, during the reopening period as well as our learning hubs and then our expansion of those learning hubs, when we reopen, um, I, I feel fairly confident that, that some of the work that you're describing is already taking place right now. We always talk about how data represent the lives of students and that requires interaction between our principals and our teachers and our families. And, um, and, and we continue to see that kind of interaction resulting in, in a more complete and holistic review of information to, to, to make sure that we're offering these opportunities to students.
Okay, excellent. And then I, I do have some questions in terms of the training for school staff. And just comparing, there seems to be a lot of training in the document for staff. But in terms of the allocation of resources of two million dollars out of the twenty-eight point five, I'm just wondering if that is going to change upwards maybe? And also, when does the training happen? I know that because of the number of days of our school year, um, training tends to happen during the school year. So the district backfilling with subs while teachers are in, in training. So I think for me, it just, it just wouldn't make sense for the training to happen before the school, the kid, before the students come into, you know, um, school the first day. So, so I'm just trying to figure out the timing of that because it's, I think it's really important for it to happen prior to students being on, on campus.
Yeah, I would say, Garcia, that is our going for a plan, but, but that's a part of the plan we haven't formed out completely yet. So we have the framework and, and, and to your point, what we think are the right topics, which you're getting as the operational aspect, which I, I would say, I don't, I don't know if Hannah, I'll open it up to anyone else in the team that has a little bit more concreteness for you, but I would say that is definitely something that we, we have a planning stance and obviously we'll, we'll, we're going to be working to figure that out in the next few weeks.
Okay.
And I think Miss Flores is popping in, so you might get a little bit more.
Yeah, Board Member Garcia, I can speak to some of this training is designed to be pre-service, pre the school year starting, but some of it is actually designed to be throughout the year. So something like the Flourish Agenda Healing Centered Engagement Deepening Strategies would be part of our regular professional development for our school social workers that's built into our contract already. Um, and it's, it's part of the ethic of social work, that continued professional development and practice, particularly around supervision. So it's, it's a kind of a both end.
Okay. That's good to know. And then I'll, I'll, I'll just ask two more questions. I'll let my colleagues ask more. I have more, but I'll just, I want to open it up as well. So my next question was also on, you know, the reality is that we don't have enough, you know, this is districts across the state don't have enough internal capacity to meet the needs of students this summer and then moving forward, right? So we are leaning, um, I think a lot on community-based organizations. I, I think as, as the state is encouraging school districts to do as an extension to build capacity. So, um, so as I'm processing that, that reality for our district as well, I think it, it's going to be really important for us to maybe understand who those community partners will be. And also ensure that the contracts allow for the scaling up, but also built in the de-escalation of services as we're losing the funds, right? Because we, these are one-time funds. So, so just wanted to make that comment in terms of the, of really leaning and with our partners in, in our communities who do amazing work. And I think, and I think it's, it would be a great partnership as was evidenced by our partnership with B K. So, um, and then going hand in hand with some of the priorities that came back from that input is that the, the family engagement or the community engagement still being of critical importance. And then, um, and then the last, um, the last question that I, I want to make sure I ask is, I, I also want to find out how we're going to measure the success of these investments in terms, in terms of how are we going to tie it to student outcomes? So that we can ensure that as we continue to hear updates and maybe revise the plan throughout the year, we're, we're, we're making the right adjustments because of the, of the student outcomes. So, so just want to make sure that that's tied in. And I do have one last question.
I see it to your question about student outcomes. That's where the connection to the L cap will be so important because of course that's, that's heavy with student outcome data and we'll be looking to do the crosswalking and maybe transplanting measures from our L cap into specific initiatives here as well that where we've already defined student targets.
Right, and, and then I'm thinking of, you know, as these dollars are drying up, um, learning what worked, what didn't work. So that we have information for future years to understand where those investments need to be made. Hopefully in a conversation where we can talk about how do we increase ongoing revenue for our district. And then one, um, one particular voice that I thought was missing, so maybe I didn't quite catch where they're reflected is part of the, um, the stakeholder input process not only included, um, parents, um, students, but also school site staff. So your teachers and, and your, your classified and your certificated workforce and as well as principals. So I'm wondering where is their voice reflected in the plan? And if it's not reflected in the plan today, when, when do we see that voice in the plan moving forward?
So to your question, Borja Garcia, and this gets to your opening comments as well, because of the sprint nature of it, I definitely would agree, one of our challenges was how do we integrate as many voices as possible? And so what we did was basically leverage our L cap survey, which is, you know, widely distributed. Now, to your point, we didn't have any targeted listening sessions or targeted groups. So that's an opportunity for us to share this plan more internally and get feedback. So I think that's an opportunity for us, but the mechanism to your point was really through our surveying process, which is open to everybody and, and, you know, we use our e-connections and and obviously our internal communication systems to tell folks, hey, please fill out the survey. But, but to the underneath of your question, that's an opportunity for us going forward as we look to implement is actually to get system feedback on prioritization and maybe system feedback on additional initiatives.
Okay, I look, I look forward to hearing how that's all going to work out. Thank you.
Thank you for the question too, Member Garcia. We, we can always improve in those areas. We did make sure that we sent, um, staff messages through my weekly messages as well, just encouraging again, as Mr. Harris indicated, to fill out the survey on several occasions. But, but again, we, we can continue to improve in, in how we seek out those, those, those additional voices as well more directly.
Great, thank you. Great questions, Member Garcia. I have a couple of questions for you. I was wondering about to Angie Sutherland's comments during her public comment. I was wondering if you can kind of touch on the assessments piece and how that'll kind of like unpack that a little bit of like how it'll take place.
You know, probably the best person to answer, if he's on, would be Matt Turkey from our equipment instruction office. I'll defer to Matt.
Hi, I'm sorry, would you please repeat the question? I couldn't quite hear it.
Yeah. Angie Sutherland during her public comments was asking about how assessments will take place. I'm asking if you can unpack that a little bit more regarding the assessments.
Yeah, absolutely. So during this, is this during the summer program or during the, during the school year?
During the summer program.
Sure. So during the summer program, there are four different programs within, sorry, three different programs during the K eight. The first one is for our current K through three students. The next one is for our four through, um, sorry, five through six. And the other one is our seven, eight students. And within each of those, there are assessments which we have. So the first one is around reading, okay? And within each of those, there are assessments which we have. So the first one is around reading, okay? So, and we're going to be using SIPs. And so there were, there are assessments built into that. We're also using something called Amira, which is an online, she's a tutor online, basically, and she helps kids read and she gives kids feedback on their reading and that sort of thing. And so that's for the one through four kids. For the five through six kids, again, there's embedded assessments for reading and writing. And similarly for seven, eight in mathematics.
And will there be any focus on special education during that time?
The question where Ms. Sutherland said that the students are kind of separated, they're actually not separated. They're actually included, all right? Just going to give you an example, all right? So let's say, for example, you have a school site with 100 spots, okay? And let's say that there are 50 students within that school site who are attending for ESY. Then 50 of those spots are already taken and there's only 50 more spots to go, okay? So that means that the students of special educational needs attending for ESY are totally and utterly included. It's an inclusive program rather than parallel, okay? So to that end, the assessments would be put in place as well, as would any accommodations which are needed. And the general education teacher would then need to be working hand in hand with the special education teacher also.
Okay, great. Thank you. My next question is regarding the high dosage tutoring section on here. And I'm wondering, it says teachers will work with small groups of students. Are these our teachers? Or are we working with community-based partners and?
These are our teachers. So basically, the community-based partners, we're going to split up into each of the team leads who's from a community-based partner will have about 10 students in their, in their classroom, okay? And then there, we want to, depending on how many teachers we get, what we really want is one teacher per class of 10 students, okay? So that every single day, that teacher can then pull out of the classroom groups of three or four, so 10, you've got two groups of three, one group of four, for 45 minute increments on that high dosage tutoring. So that's what's happening during that time.
Great, thank you. I wanted to say how much I appreciate like all the different types of groups as we're going through this. One thing I did see on here that caught my eye, and I don't expect it to be within this plan, but maybe kind of thinking outward a little bit. In the past, we've worked with the City of Refuge for the Shine Program for Girl Empowerment. And with such a high number of young teens and adults, really, but really young teens and the impact of human trafficking. I'm just wondering if we can think about maybe adding that into this. It's a fairly low cost program for us for the benefit that we give our students. So if you can kind of look into that. And then I think, oh, it's actually, oh. How do we choose the sites for the family engagement? How is that going to work? Is it all of our sites that are open for the training for staff? Sorry, it's on page 25. It says capacity for community, school teams, family engagement, learning institute.
Yeah, I don't know that one offhand. I'll refer another team member on that.
Is it, it's a two-day training for stakeholders. So I'm assuming like it's probably here or is it at school sites? I guess that's my question.
Right. I'll think back to on that.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. All right. I'll take a look at it. And then if we can both take a look at it, that'd be great. Member Morosky, did I see a sign? Oh, Member Wu, sorry. And then, and then Member Morosky.
Slide 22. It's a self-directed standalone program. Is it going to sit on the, on the schools, I mean, the district's website? How are the students going to learn about it? And then, you know, it's a self-directed training, but it will do us no good if nobody utilizes it.
I miss Florida.
Yep. Thank you so much. We've actually used this program before with our students. It's cognito, so they log in on, and there is a staff member there present to help facilitate, make sure students complete and then debrief about it. The beauty though is that depending on their knowledge, their prior experience and knowledge, they get to kind of choose their own learning adventure. And it's almost like a video game. So our students really respond, so do our staff, honestly. But to your point, it is a structured kind of guided activity.
Thank you, Member Wu. Member Morosky?
Oh, thank you. So first, I want to thank staff for all the hard work that went into this plan. I know it was, it was quick. There's a lot of different aspects to it. And I know this plan is a little bit unique in that it, you know, it's had a very quick timeframe. It has really specific students, student groups that need to be served, specific types of interventions. So I think, you know, it seems to do a really good job at covering those bases. I guess one thing I was struggling with a bit was it, I feel like it's very hard to get a sense of how, how many students will be served by each of these, you know, programs? Which students, like how, how are we going to do the targeting? And I'm, I'm asking, I guess, from the perspective that, you know, I know that not all students were affected equally, of course, by the last year, but all students were affected. So I'm thinking about it as, you know, what do we owe, you know, all of our students who have suffered through, you know, this past year? And then how are we making sure that we're also providing the targeted supports to, to the students who have struggled the most? And how are we kind of balancing those two things? And, and also, you know, to me, it makes sense to, to look at the individual students' needs rather than kind of make assumptions about, you know, this site needs this or, but I'm just wondering how we're, how we're approaching those, those questions.
Right. And so my answer will be incomplete, Borosky, because frankly, that is probably the next phase that we have to get underneath. I mean, the reality of it, we built the plan to the context of what are broad generalizations about our students? What are broad things we know that were impactful? I think what you're getting at is the operational element of the plan. And ultimately, that's where it'll be important for us to bring updates to the board. Because my hunch will be is that we'll probably, as we dig into who, are the who's that are going to various programs, that probably will reprioritize how we designate certain programs. So I don't want to give you a non-answer, but I want to be honest. And in the context of how we're building the plan, those are the things we got to get underneath. Our first phase of this, because as you mentioned, the sprint was required, was making sure we had programs we felt were good for our students, particularly for students who are at risk, to your point, because we actually want to make sure whatever we do impacts the students who are designated. The underneath of your question is absolutely important in terms of differentiation of those supports. And that's the work that's ahead of us to make sure we can do that with credibility.
Okay, okay. No, that's it.
And Member Morosky, can I just interject? And it goes also back to the idea of staffing capacity. And so that's, that's another item that we are going to have to come back to the board as we start releasing and posting these positions is what, what does staffing look like? I would ask Mr. Turkey, for example, back to the question that Ms. Sutherland, I think, was mentioning in public comment about, you know, what is high dosage tutoring? Is it just tutoring with a different name? And so we know what it looks like and what it should look like. The question is, will we have enough teachers to do that kind of work? And so, Mr. Turkey, if you could just explain kind of high level, what high dosage tutoring looks like?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's some hallmarks of high dosage tutoring. So the first one is dosage, okay? So it's got to be a minimum of three times a week. If it's less than three times a week, then that's obviously not good. More is better. So three to five times a week is what we're aiming for. The next one is duration, okay? So we're really looking at somewhere in between 40 and 60 minutes in duration of time, okay? The next aspect of the high dosage tutoring is then around how many kids you have, all right? So about three or four, basically the lower the size, the better, okay? If it gets above three or four, then what you have to do is start splitting into multiple small groups rather than one small group, and that takes a different level of skill. The next thing which you need is basically some, some good standards-based curriculum, which is on grade level, okay? Which is going to stretch kids, but is at the right, right place for kids, basically. And then we need some assessments in place so that we can see that it's working. Those are really the hallmarks of high dosage tutoring. And the kids are going to be very specifically chosen and chosen for the specific thing which you're giving them high dosage tutoring around. Where tutoring typically fails, I'll just want to give you a very quick example. As a math teacher, you could say, okay, anybody who's got any problems, come see me at Tuesday after school. That will work for some kids who come with a very specific problem and say, hey, Mr. Turkey, can you help me with graphing equations? Yes, I can help you with graphing equations, okay? But with kids who are, let's say, two, three years behind grade level, something much more intensive and much more purposeful is needed. Where it isn't where the kids come and say, I'm going to tell you what I need, teacher, right? It's the other way around where the teacher is basically assessing the kids and saying, okay, as a teacher of this subject, I know what you need and I can give you the intensity of tutoring to be able to meet those needs. So I hope that explains it somewhat.
Okay, yes, thank you. So I guess, what is the plan for coming back to the board? To, because I know there's, there's still, you know, questions, questions to be answered. And I mean, to, to me, I would hope that we can, you know, that we're in the position finally, since I've been on the board of having some resources to be able to address, you know, the needs that we know exist, that we, that we kind of work, work towards specific outcomes and work from, you know, the needs that are identified. And, you know, like, can we make a statement like, through this plan, we are going to, you know, address all of the, you know, K through three kids who are not reading on grade level, they will get X, you know, something like that. Like, you know, that's what I'm kind of trying to wrap my head around. Like, I like all the elements of it, but it's, it's hard for me to see, you know, how, like, what exactly we'll be getting out of it. And so I would, I don't know, what, what is the appropriate process to, you know, to further define those things? And how do you see that playing out? Like, does the board have a role in that? Is that a staff, you know, driven thing that will come back and tell, tell us like, this is what we think we can do, given this capacity constraints or?
I'll offer an initial thought and so like defer to superintendent. I mean, as I mentioned, you know, that we're looking for synchronicity of plans, protecting the context of our LCAP. And so ultimately, I think some of the measures you're speaking to will flag in our LCAP because that will have measurable outcomes, that will have three-year targets, that will create the ability for the board to review and monitor. I think the other half of your question comes in the build out. So to the degree that our LCAP metrics potentially will be incomplete, that's where staff will come back and present to the board other ideas about the return on investment, specifically as it relates to student outcomes. So I think, you know, my first answer will be creating synchronicity of outcomes because we do have outcomes in the draft LCAP that we've already published and we're refining those. But I think to your other part of your question in terms of the whole plan, that's where we'll have to take some time and actually do the prioritization of everything that's in it and figure out, okay, let's lift this out as an additional outcome measure. So I do think we have the first starter outcome measures through our LCAP and I think we need to add on to it as we understand better how the plan implements any impact. Because ultimately, while we believe there's research-based practices and we believe in those research-based practices, I think to your question, Borosky, we'll have to validate, you know, this is what we think the impact is for students and be able to present that to you. So again, I would say the first wave will be our LCAP measures and those are just aggregated by student group. And the next wave will be once we get the plan formed more in terms of those pieces that we have shared or more formative tonight, once we lock those in, then we'll come back and share. To your other question on updates, certainly we can plan for quarterly updates on the plan and make that a routine for next school year. So you have an ongoing conversation because again, the synchronicity and the board's already asked for this, the synchronicity of our LCAP and our planning documents is important. And so we'll commit to making sure those are brought back in the public square on a regular basis. So as you can see, both the process and, and the impact.
Yeah, I would like to spend some time, maybe over the summer, figuring out what, you know, we have a lot going on, right? We have a lot of plans. We have a lot of resources. We have a lot of programs to figure out maybe some kind of integration in terms of reporting and something that's more efficient and we can actually track, like maybe based on just the LCAP outcomes. And these are the, these are the different program threads that we have that are addressing the outcomes that we want to see. Because I feel like we really need that coherence and that, you know, that conversation to be able to show our community. These are the, these are the things that we're addressing and to be able to like understand that ourselves. Okay. Well, thank you. That was, I mean, like the high level stuff.
Member Morosky, I'd also offer that, as I think we may have sent, and if we haven't, we can send it certainly to policy brief about restorative restart. And we are very much in conversations with some of the researchers that were part of that, that policy brief. And I say it because I think that there's going to be more and more discussion about how we are going to track and monitor the effectiveness of these kinds of programs. Because certainly, as you heard, the focus is not going to be all on academics. And so as those individuals are continuing to provide updates to us about what are sort of the longer-term areas that we're going to be able to track the effectiveness of something that we do in the summer that, again, is aligned to, to, to what they're encouraging us to focus on as part of these efforts. We will continue to inform and be engaged with them so that we can tie some summer-related findings to something that, you know, we can, we can, we might be able to see during the academic year, the upcoming academic year.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's wonderful. I mean, I think that, you know, learning will, will inform us as Member Garcia mentioned. So I think this is going to be kind of an ongoing conversation and we'll continue to talk about, you know, when we talk about the federal funds and how, you know, the federal funds will layer on top of what, you know, what we've adopted here and align and hopeful and, and I believe they will. So I just want to say, I am absolutely thrilled to see the peer mental health and near-peer mental health program that I think that's going to be really powerful. I think, you know, it has had really good outcomes when it's been tried. So I'm just really appreciative of the inclusion of that. I know we've been, we've been talking about it for many, many months and just thrilled to, I will be thrilled to see our, our students participate in that. So I'll just mention a couple of other things and you don't need to, you know, talk about them or respond to them because there'll be, I think, areas of conversation. But one thing I've been wondering about is, you know, to get to that individual need, can we do sort of universal assessments and have individualized learning recovery plans for each student? How viable is that? I'm concerned about what we're doing specifically for the early grades on those foundational literacy skills. How specifically are we re-engaging our students who are disengaged? You know, what more are we doing for students with disabilities who did not receive, you know, or received services that were not in person the way they were used to? And like cultural and linguistic access and parent empowerment? I think this is an opportunity to, to make some progress there. So those are, those are just the other, the other things that came to mind in reviewing this. And again, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this and continuing. Look forward to continuing that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Morosky. All right. Are there any other? Oh, Member Rhodes?
Thank you, all of my colleagues who gave insight and their perspective. Very excited. Very excited to see this and even the stakeholder portions of it. As, as Member Garcia says, we can probably do more internally around our teachers and especially our staff members. But what we have here is better actually than what we did before. So I do appreciate the incremental change and moving forward to do even more. I had a quick question. I will not hold you guys too long at all. Two things, the high-dose tutoring. Does the high-dose tutoring also include our EL students? And how are we incorporating those groups into this work and plan around recovery? I'll just ask that first, and you guys can ask the next one next.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So EL students were part of the priority groups who were first invited to apply for a space in the summer program. And in terms of the high doses tutoring, yes, they'll be getting the high doses tutoring. And we're also hiring bilingual aides who will be able to work within the classroom with the students as well. So that will be for our students, our EL students.
Perfect, thank you for that. And then our sites that have dual immersion programs, will we be offering dual immersion programs and during our summer programs at the sites that already hold them? Or will these summer programs only be held in English?
The summer programs, I believe, will only be held in English. I do not believe we're holding any dual immersion ones at this time.
Okay, I would like to just point out, it seems, it seems loud, but I would like to just point out also, for our dual immersion programs, there is a, there's a learning loss in, in both languages. And so as we ask the youth to matriculate into the next grades and be able to continue along this pathway, I think it is imperative that those youth also get those supports in that language program. So something to consider and look at as we build this thing out. So thank you guys for your time.
Great point, thank you.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. All right, this is an action item, so I'll entertain a motion. So move this. All right, I have a motion of second, student preferential vote.
Aye.
Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Borowski.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. And thank you, staff, for all your hard work. Item 6.2, Facilities Master Plan Update. Ms. Ramos and Mr. Browning.
Good evening, President Pritchett and Board Member Superintendent. Tonight, we're going to be presenting you an update on the Facility Master Plan. Before we get into that presentation, just for the benefit of folks who may not be familiar with this project, the district issued a RFP a couple of years ago in 2019 to solicit a group to complete the Facility Master Plan. And the firm that was selected is DLR to prepare a five-year Facility Master Plan. And what that is, it's basically a collection of data of our facilities to, to help us plan for future facility improvements and prioritize resources. And the unique thing about this plan is that it also includes a district equity index that will further assist in prioritizing these capital improvement projects. And so DLR is going to share with you this evening the progress to date and then the next step. So at this point, I am going to turn it over to our interim Assistant Superfacilities, Dr. Lee Sata, so he can make introductions. Lee?
Yes, great, thank you so much, Rose, and thank you, Board of Ed members, for the opportunity for us to present to you this evening. I want to remind everyone that this is a snapshot of a process that began way back in 2019, as Rose said, with the selection of DLR as our architects who are going to complete the Facility's Master Plan. And to date, they've completed several assessments, which they will share with you. And also recently, I wanted to say that we had a full stop to the process in order to take a hard look at the equity issues that Rose mentioned and come up with an equity index that is relevant to our group. We're working closely with the Steering Committee and the Central Planning Group, who had provided some feedback and gave us some guidance on how to proceed there. Excuse me. So the next step I'd like to do is just introduce the DLR and RSS consulting teams. I would like to say special thanks to Omna Javed, who's been our Facilities Manager, pushing the process forward, Nathaniel Browning, our Director, and of course, Rose Ramos, who's been providing the overall leadership. And so we've had, I'll introduce Mark Covington with DLR and Dr. Regina Standbeck Stroud with RSS Consulting, and they'll introduce their teams and take you through the presentation. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Dr. Sata. There we go. My name is Mark Covington. Good evening, Members Superintendent Aguilar and Sac City USD community. My name is Mark Covington, Principal Architect with DLR Group. And we're honored to be with you tonight to present an update to your Facility's Condition Assessment and Master Plan. We have about 20 minutes to provide you an update on what we've accomplished, where we are today, and where we're headed for the next few months. So next slide, please. I'd like to start us off with just a high-level introduction of your team. As Dr. Sata had said, DLR Group is more than architects. We are experts in research, community school, or public school design, and educational planning. This team has invested thousands of hours in assessing your facilities, collecting data, and reaching out to your community. Mr. Blueett and Ms. Lavezio are both on the call with us here tonight, and you will hear more from them later. And so to complement this team, as, as Dr. Sata has said, Ms. Ramos and her staff introduced us to, to a group of equity-minded professionals. But I must share that every time we meet with our new partners, I learn something new. Next slide, please. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Regina Standbeck Stroud with RSS Consulting for a brief introduction of her team.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Dr. Sata. Board President Pritchett and members of the Board, Superintendent Aguilar and members of the dais here, colleagues and friends in the community, thank you for the opportunity to introduce the RSS consulting team. I'd like to start with introducing myself. I'm a recently retired Community College Chancellor and President of a college, and also have served as a Vice President of Instruction and a Professor of Nursing Sciences. I'm widely recognized for my scholarship in critical race and educational leadership. And I'm regarded for my work, highly regarded for my work on student equity and diversity, economic empowerment, and anti-poverty strategies. Also on my team, I'd like to go to the next person beside me on this picture, is Diane White. She is the President and Founder of Integrated Academic Solutions, and she brings over 30 years of experience in higher education, including 25 years of award-winning teaching, as well as administrative and consultative positions, all of which inform her student-centered approach to strategic, integrated, and comprehensive master planning. And then quickly, I would like to introduce Dr. Casey Graney. She joins us and has served the bulk of her career in leading institutional research, planning, and effectiveness in the California Community College system. And she's recognized as an expert further in student success through data-informed decisions. And finally, Dr. Siri Brown, who is currently the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and Support Services at the Peralta Community College District. She is a critical race scholar as well and a historian with an emphasis in early American, African-American, and women's history. And with this, we bring out perspective and have had the, have had the pleasure and the honor of being able to engage in the conversations and ensuring the discussions around equity, literacy, and critical race. You're muted, Mark.
You'll hear more from Dr. Standbeck Stroud and her team a little later on in the, in the presentation, excuse me. So, next slide, please. So what we first want to share with you is, is the why for Facility's Master Plan and Facility's Condition Assessment. It goes through it really fast. You can see in the red text that we just want to align ourselves, align the learning environment to support the district's goal. And how do we do that? We do that through a Facility's Assessment and a Master Plan. Next slide, please. So what is it, what is it, what is the assessment and master plan? Well, it's where we collect data to help you determine how the district will prioritize resources for future capital improvement projects. You can just have a brief read of that. Next slide, please. The purpose of what we're, what we're doing for the district is to just take the facilities from their current state and bridge current state of facilities to the future state of facilities. Next slide, please. So I want to just share out with you what we've accomplished. Dr. Sata has already shared, and Ms. Ramos has already shared. They brought you, the district has brought a RFP, Request for Proposals, to us in February, and the board did, then approved it in June of 2019. And we anticipate a release of data that we have gathered, made available around the, around June 1st. Next slide, please. So the whole team is made up not only of those that are in this meeting and with us tonight, but is inclusive of strategic partners. We've had numerous meetings with key stakeholders over the past 20 months, including a steering group, which helps guides the process, an intentional core planning group to establish a vision. And this group also includes Dr. Standbeck Stroud's team and department leadership to share out and help us with defining specific department needs. And you can see the multiple meeting dates that we've had. There are several others besides the ones that are on your screen, but just take note that June 16th, coming up in next month, will be another core planning group meeting. Next slide, please. So the next few slides, I'm just going to walk through how we've assessed your campuses, what we've done according to our contract. And we've assessed each campus with regards to its adequacy of the learning environment and how it contributes to student achievement. We evaluate the campuses through a six, six evidence-based lenses that make up that petal-shaped flower that you see in the screen right before you. And my partner, Anton Blueett, will speak to that more, more on, more to this information. And how do we use this to build on a vision and educational specifications for the district facilities? Next slide, please. So the state of California has set a goal where all public buildings become zero net energy by 2030. And what that means is that it needs to be a zero net, net-zero balance, if you will, where the energy production must be equal to the energy consumption, therefore equaling the two out and making it zero, literally zero consumption. We perform detailed assessments to assist the district with prioritizing its resources on future projects in order to meet this state goal. Next slide, please. So through our data gathering process, our team has also assessed each site with regards to technology readiness. We understand that there's been some challenges that have surfaced recently, and that was shared out with us. And our team proactively reached out to Dr. Lyons and to capture a little bit better understanding of your technology challenges and the specific needs. And I think that meeting happened earlier this week, in fact. Next slide, please. We've also inventoried all of your campuses to gather information on enrollment, capacities, and projections. We've gotten that information from your, the district's demographer. And that sort of helps us understand how each campus is utilized. Next slide, please. And through our site visits, we've performed safety and security assessments targeting adequacy of areas like your student drop-offs, your fire alarm systems, exterior lighting, camera, and intrusion alarm systems. Next slide, please. It's a little hard to read this one, but we want to make sure that, that, that we share with you. It's just simply a snapshot and an opportunity for us to indicate that we barcoded all of your equipment and uploaded it into the school district's maintenance software program called Dude Solutions. And this helps, this better assists and helps with long-term planning and with preventative, with your preventative maintenance program. Next slide, please. So this is sort of where we get into the meat of the Facility's Condition Assessment and the Facility's Condition Index. And you'll hear me using the acronym FCI several times for the, for the remainder of my slides. And I just want to draw your attention to the first bullet that has the dark, excuse me, the bold text. And the FCI is an objective indication of a building's overall condition. It is defined as the ratio of cost of current needs divided by the current replacement value of that facility. So for fast math, if you have, if we have a facility that has a current replacement value of $30 million and its current needs are $10 million, that's one-third, that's 33%. Of, of, FCI would be considered 33%. So you would look down and see in the, in the matrix below you, that would be in the pink range, that would be above. That area has, that has reached its useful life, end of its useful life and serviceable life, and renewal of the facility is now necessary. So what's key to what we show in our assessments and our indexes, whatever FCI is greater than 20% results in a facility with poor condition. That's in the red text at the bottom. Next slide, please. So the district has used the, I just want to give accolades to the community for passing Measure H. And the, the district used our Facility's Condition Assessment back in November of 2019 and identified $3.5 billion in facilities repairs and needs over the next 10 years. And the board adopted Resolution 3113 and then got the bond, Bond Measure H was passed in March of 2020 with a 62-plus percent vote. So kudos to the community on passing that. Next slide, please. So this is a graph of each of your, a dot of each of your campuses as it relates to the Facility's Condition Index. So to the far left is in pink are your poor-condition campuses, middle, fair-condition campuses, good-condition campuses, based on their FCI number. dotted line is your, is the average of all of the campuses across the district at 13.51%. So I just draw your attention to the far left, where you can see the dots hit that 25% over there. There are still, there are five campuses that are up above 25%, even one above 30% of a Facility's Condition Index, which takes 30% of its current value to just do necessary repairs. I want to make sure that we all understand that. Next slide, please. So this is another snapshot of a data we collected. We like to, we like to show this one. And the reason we show this is because it's important to know that we've collected over, this is an Excel file, by the way. It's 20,000 rows of data and 22 columns wide. And so it is just a massive document that all the Facility's Condition indexes and assessments are built off of this one, this file. Next slide, please. So this is what we shared with the board back in November of 2019, which then advanced into passing Measure H, or assisting with it. This shows $3.5 billion in repair costs for the district and on all facilities over the next 10 years. And it's, it, it shows in pie charts how it's distributed across all the campuses, and it shows in other pie charts how it, how it aligns with different buildings and site items on each one of the school sites. So you can kind of see a pie chart. And this is, this is like Dr. Sata said earlier, this is a snapshot in time. This is what it looked like in November of 2019 to assist with the bond, obviously. Next slide, please. So I want to just take, take a moment to talk about how all of the Facility's Condition data begins to translate into graphics. As I shared before, we've been at several campuses, gathered a lot of data. You can see on Washington Elementary on the left, Nicholas Elementary on the right. We've been to all the districts. We've identified all the spaces on all the site. We've identified the needs and identified the, the equipment. It has been barcoded and safety, security, all the information I've shared with you for each one of these campuses. Now that translates into, the next slide, please. Translates into how we assess the facility condition. This graphic will be a part of a final master plan to show the facility condition of Washington Elementary School. You can see at the bottom of your screen on the left, lands at 6.6 FCI. Puts it in the blue range, right, in the good condition. But as you look at Nicholas Elementary School, that moves way over there to the pink side of that graph that I showed you earlier, 28.5% FCI. So, and you can see in the different rooms, which ones are the different spaces on the buildings by the different color codes that we use, how we go from facilities in great need compared to facilities that are, that are in not so much need. So all of this, all of this information will give you a 10,000-foot view of what we've accomplished. Next slide, please. And now I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Standbeck Stroud and Mr. Blueett to share with you where we are in the process today.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mark. And if you can go to the next slide, please. We have been engaged with the stakeholder group, as a matter of fact, the core planning group, which is made up of parents and community members and partners, organizations, and teaching and learning, and multi-constituent members of the district that include administrators, teachers, and classified professional staff have been engaged and doing some pretty impressive work. And we've had the opportunity to join this group and, and extend the conversation with regard to equity and making sure that, that factors and issues of equity are considered in the prioritization process and the allocation of the resources. In doing this work, the, the core planning group has engaged in these discussions and came up with, or they, they shared with us the factors that they thought needed to be incorporated. And one of the things that we did was we verified with them, this is what we, this is what we heard you say. This is what you said to us, this is what we heard. And we, we checked with them and verified with them, even at a subsequent meeting to make sure that that was the case. And they came up with four particular areas. One was that equity matters. Two, neighborhoods matter. Three, history matters. And four, voices matter. So with regard to the issues, those four issues, the equity matters was the top issue. And the top issue that they felt like needed to be emphasized is that all students have the equal opportunity to succeed educationally regardless of the neighborhood that they're in, or regardless of their race. So that you have the outcomes and experiences of students that are not predicted by race. And they, they spoke very specifically to the historical inequities in the district, but particularly the recent school closures. They have been very vocal about making sure or asking and, and, and appreciating the fact that the district is acknowledging historical inequities. That's, that, that our processes simply have managed to, to replicate. And they also gave some specific suggestions around making sure that there is shared decision-making and, and making sure that there are equitable resources and which means that it wouldn't necessarily be that all schools get the same resources, but that there would be equitable resources. The other thing that they said is that neighborhoods matter. This is a big part of the conversation. It was the, the second most popular issue in terms of what needed to be emphasized. And that was due in part to the historical inequities as well that resulted in under-resourcing some schools and, and in the consideration of school closures. Now, the interesting thing about this is that there is a very high interest in making sure that they are addressing the impact of the way in which open enrollment causes problems. It causes the reallocation and the shifting of allocation of resources from under-resourced institutional, under-resourced schools to schools that may be in higher or more affluent areas. And, and the, the actual structure itself in and of itself replicates that inequity as well. So they want to make sure that the factors that are in place mitigate that, that structural, that structure of inequity that exists. And so that, we anticipate that there'll be a lot of discussion on that as well. And we expect to be able to dedicate more time to that at the next meeting. They also said that history matters. And that history is, that, that they said to pay attention to the fact that there is a historical inequity in the Sacramento City School District, including the history of redlining in non-white neighborhoods. And that led to inadequate and inequitable distribution of resources within the district. And race has been a major factor. So we have been apologetic in, in terms of having the discussions as it relates to race. Community members and parents were people that are participating in the core group. And some of them hold those, you know, dual positions, have been quite vocal about that. But they also have acknowledged the fact that the district is, is paying attention to or has at least openly acknowledged the historical issues. And then finally, the, one of the things I will say is that they addressed the issue of that voices matter. And they indicated that, that they were, that this needed to be informed by these multiple voices and move some of the voices that have been in the margins to the center. And the reality is that we have processes that are designed to get those voices. But even they brought up, for an example, at the previous meeting, you know, there were probably, there are a lot of people on the, the core planning group, but there probably were about 12 to 14 members that were not a part of the district or not a part of the consulting team, or not a part of the architectural team. So they are really interested in making sure that we do everything that we can in order to enhance those voices. And we actually have some ideas and some strategies in, in mind to be able to do that. A few other things came up, and then I'll close it with this and move to the next slide, is that there, there were some discussions about making sure that we have the conversations about student, how students with disabilities are affected and pay attention to the accessibility and, in all of the schools and pay attention particularly to the availability of special day classes, because they're only offered in some sites. And, and with that, the others, other issues also did come up. But with that, I'd like to move to ask Diane White to talk a little bit about, so how do we pull all of this together? And what is the North Star? What is the guiding star in this? And she's going to talk about the LCAP.
Thank you. So first, the core value and guiding principles statements, which appear in the draft LCAP document, provide the foundation for that key plan and also for critical plan integration. The core value statement focuses on interrupting inequities that exist to level the playing field and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, grow and reach their greatness. And the guiding principle states, SCUSD's commitment to equity-driven decision-making and resource allocation will be critical as a district strives to improve outcomes for all students and close the significant performance gaps between students. So the LCAP is your North Star for planning, meaning that the LCAP is the primary navigation and a marker that will guide the district toward its purposeful destination, which will be achieved through the implementation of the LCAP's goals. In short, the LCAP has been grounded in equity-centered data, and that data has been used to develop its goals. And together, the LCAP's goals and resulting, the LCAP data and resulting goals are going to be used to inform the facilities master plan, the prioritization of district resources in ways that will level the playing field and close opportunity gaps that exist between different student groups. Next slide, please.
So may I ask Dr. Graney to speak to the issue of the equity indicators? Thank you, Diane.
Thank you. The district's core planning group for the facilities master plan has been discerning the best approach to ensure that equity is prioritized in selecting future projects. Current thinking is to develop three indicators to inform decisions. Regarding students, the core planning group believes students with the greatest opportunity gaps should be prioritized to accelerate their achievement. The new draft LCAP, as Diane mentioned, is data-informed and has been well-vetted, and it prioritizes specific groups of students, including foster youth, homeless youth, English learners, students with disabilities and students of color. The core group wishes to prioritize the same student groups. Neighborhoods are, of course, the setting for all schools, and the core planning group would like to factor in the condition of a neighborhood. We are considering using an established neighborhood index that takes into account socioeconomic status, racial segregation, poverty concentration and health and environmental factors. Lastly, school sites most in need of improvement will be prioritized or should be prioritized according to the district's core planning group. The status of the health and safety risks ADA compliance and the adequacy and condition of furniture and spaces has been rated by outside experts using measures from the facility condition index, which was explained by DLR earlier in this presentation. I'd like to now hand the presentation over to Anton Blue from DLR, who has been expertly shepherding this project. Next slide.
Thank you, Casey. So as Casey mentioned, I'm really here to share a little bit about that bridge that Mark showed between the LCAP as your North Star and Measure H, right? Funds for facility improvement projects. And part of that critical bridge is what we call the educational specification. So I want you to think about those really as your vision for the learning environment. And by that, I mean the student experience. And we know that there are a number of students that are navigating a variety of barriers, right? Ranging from poverty, housing instability, food insecurity, lack of access to healthcare. But at the same time, these students are incredibly resilient. They know their worth. And they have spoken loudly to us that they deserve great facilities. And we also know that we've got a wealth of community assets that we can draw upon. And families believe in education as the practice of freedom. So with that, this core planning group, the program-focused groups, the facility group have really pushed on us to take an expanded view of the facility, right? So that it's more than just providing students with warm, safe and dry environments, but we can actually use it to create design strategies tailored to all of your LCAP sub-goals, from college and career readiness to targeted support for students, culture and climate. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about what those design strategies look like. And before I begin, I just want you to kind of imagine a student's daily experience. And when they come onto a campus, what do they see? Do they see a school that tells them they are valued, right? That we value creativity and innovation? To the moment that they actually enter the campus, right? The entry experience. Are we empowering staff to do those social and emotional check-in, right? So let's say, for example, a student is experiencing trauma or is having a difficult day. Do they have the opportunity to take a shower, to take a nap, to wash their clothes, or to even meet with a mental health professional, right? Providing space for those services to take place. We also know that food is a critical foundation, right? Are we providing quality meals and a dining experience to match? And are we allowing students to have access to food throughout the day, building off your incredible central kitchen, right? To allow that to roll out to all sites? We also know that movement matters, right? On one hand, we're talking fitness facilities, athletic fields, but also how are we allowing movement to take place in learning environments throughout the day? We know that movement allows us to restore our executive function as well as to concentrate and to focus. But really, I want us to think about our primary learning environments, right? The classrooms where students spend the majority of their day. Are we giving them the furniture, the tools, the resources, the spaces that allow self-directed learning, right? To tap into their curiosities and to their passions for furniture, right? It's not just furniture that moves, but it's the ability to stand, to lounge, to actually sit on the ground in terms of spaces. We know that it's more than just a classroom, right? Are we providing teachers with a suite of spaces to create a community? So they've got the ability to create meaningful connections to students and we're creating a positive culture. But also thinking about the unique needs of English language learners, students with disabilities, thinking about acoustic challenges. Are we providing too much stimulation, not enough stimulation? Temperature regulation, but also the support that we mentioned earlier for those paraprofessionals to do their work. Are we allowing small group rooms that would allow that form of tutoring, that sort of one-on-one that needs to happen in order to sort of move students out of this COVID era? But really, the key piece that I want to emphasize with Dr. Stanback Stroud said, which is that neighborhoods matter. And ultimately, we have heard from the core planning group that they want students to have access to these types of learning environments in their neighborhood, right? That they want to have access to a neighborhood school. And at the same time, these schools are engines for economic growth in their neighborhoods. Lastly, I just want to talk about the influence on the caregiver, right? How does the learning environment impact teacher well-being? Health, so that we can attract and retain the best educators, giving them the greatest environment to work together. Also, support for families, right? Are we providing infrastructure, that social infrastructure, as well as social cohesion throughout an entire community? And I just want to come back to the student for a minute. Are we giving them maximum pathways for careers that don't yet exist, right? This is anywhere from visual arts, performing arts, science, mega-spaces, CTE, really pushing that from both the high school level, potentially to the middle school level, and providing those facilities also to elementary students. And bringing that all together, the research shows definitively that those things allow students to be more engaged, to be excited to come to school, their health and well-being, their academic achievement, which all links to college and career and civic success. So with that, I'd like to go to the next page, which is just very quickly going to show, we are measuring all of these categories across all of your campuses, right? So we're using a database way to measure every one of those things that I just described. And then we can use this data so we're not employing a one-size-fits-all, right? We can have context-specific strategies for the unique neighborhood needs and student needs at each one of your campuses. And ultimately, to give as many students access to great neighborhood schools as possible. So with that, I'll go to the next slide. And this is to Mark.
Yeah, what will all of this information produce? A data-driven, interactive website where the district and its community stakeholders can access transparent information regarding its facility assessments, the educational vision for its facilities, as Anton just shared, and a supporting district-wide master plan. So as you see before you, we have an anticipated completion date of late July of this year. And we will come back to you with a, for a review and approval, update, review and approval in August of 2021 as well. Could you go to the next slide, please? And we'll leave it open for a board discussion.
Thank you. I believe we have five live public comments on this item.
Yes. First public comment is Mo Cashmary.
Hi, everybody. Mo Cashmary here, a parent of a student at William Land. I'm really excited to hear that we're really taking into account, making sure that we're climate-neutral by 2030. My, my son actually decided which school to go. We had a choice between going to the local school, which was around the corner, or going to a dual-emergent school that was further away. And he chose the local school because, quote, he told me he didn't want to die because of climate change. And that, that really hit me and made me realize that that's a critical part. I, I'm proud that we're doing this work. I want to advocate that the board do another bond measure. If there's $3.5 billion of need, we clearly need to do more bond measures. And we need to meet the moment and really give, and have schools that kids and families want to go to. We've got to reverse the enrollment drop in this area. And, and having nice, shiny, bright facilities that achieve what we need is important. So it encourages us to be looking at doing another bond. The district can use money to look at polls and things like that. I feel like we need to be proactive on that. And instead of going with a small bond like $750 million, in my opinion, we should be going bigger. So I, I think right now we have a unique moment with COVID where we can tell people, look, a lot of our classes, some of our classrooms didn't even have more than one plug. Some of them don't have windows. You know, like, we don't have the basics that we need for our kids to be successful. So thank you. I look forward to working with you all and hopefully some successful bond measures coming up. Thanks.
Parents Gladney.
Good evening. I want to start by saying that there were many, many members of the community who were even unaware that this meeting was taking place. And I understand the urgency of, you know, the previous action item and the timeline associated with it. But in context of this facilities item, in previous years, we've had an ad hoc facilities committee of the board. We've had monthly facilities reports. And I feel like those were opportunities to highlight work such as this on a consistent basis. I feel like this work needs the audience and the visibility of a full board meeting. And also the, the attendance of a full board, you know, membership is, is too important. It's too great. I, I stand beside all of my team members on this committee, committed to equity and committed to actually enacting the words that are within our board's vision statement. You know, actually doing something different than what we have done and what has existed for generations and has not worked. It's an action, it's an opportunity though, really, is, is the intersection of hope and opportunity to capitalize on this moment and to activate many meaningful actions that support otherwise ceremonial resolutions of the board. You know, this is one of those opportunities that I speak to you guys frequently about when we pass resolutions as a board. You know, what are the actions behind it that we can act? I'm sorry, that's, that's a bird. I'm outside. It's a bird flying overhead. I see, I see Warmer Garcia, like, is there a bird in, in Serna? But no, this is an opportunity, like, this is, this is something that could support those otherwise meaningless resolutions, right? Actions with words. And, and I will say that on the heels of a cabinet restructuring, it's my expectation that we now have a streamlined reporting structure that will allow integration of all funding sources, including the $750 million of bond dollars to be integrated, integrated into things such as the LCAP. You know, with, with Rose Ramos, you know, overseeing all of that, it's an opportunity that we should capitalize on. And, and it's too great, right? You know, the first thing students see when they walk to our schools is the building. It's the gates, it's the entry, it's, it's the people that, that greet them. And, and that's what bond dollars mean. And, 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 you know, no pun intended, but this work around bond funds and bond dollars has bonded so many members of our community, stakeholders, community members, parents, staff members, and, and experts such as RSS and DLR Group. And I'm blessed to be working alongside of them. We're all committed to this. But our work only means something if you guys as a board stand and act with your ability and authority that you've been elected to, to enact. So thank you guys so much for listening to this. And I hope that you guys bring it back to a full, regular board meeting so that it does get highlighted and uplifted in the way that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney.
Sarah Kingsley and Renee Webster-Hawkins will be giving their time to our last public comment from Angie Sutherland.
Hello, everyone. I just want to say thank you to the team for
I just want to say thank you to the team for presenting this very detailed report in alignment with one of the board's resolutions from October 2020, recognizing the rights of students with disability to equality and inclusive education. We'd like to acknowledge that far too many students are pushed to segregated classroom settings miles away from their own neighborhoods. There's an over-representation of students being sent to separate schools, denying their right to be educated in the least restrictive environment. Federal education law or the Individuals with Disabilities Act has two federal important requirements for a child's placement. A child with an IEP should be with kids in general ed to the maximum extent that is appropriate. And special classes, separate schools, or removal from the general education class should only happen when a child's learning or thinking difference, a disability under IDEA, is so severe that supplementary aids and services can't provide the child with an appropriate education. With the October 2020 resolution, the board recognized that students with disabilities are general education students first and that every educational, operational and budget decision we make begins with the belief that students with disabilities have a right to and have the ability to learn alongside their non-disabled peers and equitable and meaningful opportunities to learn and grow. However, despite the affirmative rights and appreciation for students with disabilities in our federal and state laws, students with disabilities as a whole suffer poor academic and social emotional outcomes in our district, especially those who are students of color and English language learners. To be their best, students must feel a sense of connectedness and belonging to their school community. This means equitable and accessible design, which this presentation highlighted. Busing students to faraway sites and having to transfer to different sites multiple times based on IEP placement does not provide connectedness or belonging for students or families. Families often lack awareness of programs at sites and accept what is offered through their IEP. We would like to impress upon the board the need that every site plan, including retrofitting or adding classroom space, to ensure that all students with disabilities can be served appropriately at their neighborhood school in inclusive practices, educational environments. In addition, portable classrooms need to be evaluated, if not already part of this plan. Many of the special day classes exist in portables at the back of campus, separating students from the other students and resulting in othering. If the district is committed to provide equality and inclusive education, this must change. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. All right, I will open this up for discussion. I have a few comments and questions. I first want to just thank everyone that has worked on this throughout the years. I know this is long anticipated for all of us involved. And so just, this is so much to absorb. And I know this, a lot of work went into this, so I just want to thank each of you. I wanted to know if it was possible for us to get, like, just a list of sites by facilities condition? Kind of like a, just a general sheet, just saying, by the way that you guys ranked them, fair, poor, good? I can't remember what the other ones were.
Yes, this is Rose Ramos, President Pritchett. And I could ask Mark to share with you when that website will go live? What's going to happen is that there's going to be a website with all this data loaded and you're going to be able to drill down to one school and down to whether they need HVAC or very specific items. And then you'll be able to zoom out to high level. But Mark, do you want to share when that website will be available to the public?
Yeah, the data will be available, as I indicated, around June 1st. The website itself would be available after board approval in August, after priorities have been set and we get to give you another update, the members another update. But the data will become available. And for Member Pritchett, we can definitely sort that out and provide that to staff for you.
That's fantastic. That led me, like, that just pretty much answered my next question because I wanted to know if there was going to be a website dashboard that we'd be able to drill down by site and the area of the schools and all that. So that answers the question. I kind of figured there would be, but I didn't want to assume. And then with it being a five-year master plan, we started this in 2019. So I know some of the sites were looked at back as far as 2019. And then kind of COVID hit, then kind of slowed things down, I'm sure. But I'm just wondering, this five-year master plan, will it start at, like, from this year? Five years forward or is it from 2019 and then five years?
Yeah, this is Lisa. That's a great question, Member Pritchett. And I think the answer to that is that while the assessments were done in 2019, we've continued to have funds from our previous bonds. And we have been continuing to do some of the necessary repair work to various sites. So I think it's fair to say that, you know, really, this, we'll sort of think of this overall plan as something that goes forward from approximate, the approximate time that it is approved by the board. You can see just in the variance of the overall numbers in terms of the current bond versus the overall need, that this is going to get us off to a really good start. But there will be continued needs over time. So of course, our goal is to do a, you know, great job for the district, be very transparent and open about our processes, make sure that we have the proper community input so that this lays the foundation and the groundwork for additional bonds, as was mentioned by one of our public speakers.
And then we're able to keep it updated from there on out of things that come up in nature of, from our school sites? Is that correctly?
Yes, we have a regular database that our facilities team, you know, receives requests from the sites. And of course, our team is on the sites doing their own assessments on a regular basis. You know, one of the silver linings from the COVID processes, you all know, is that we were able to assess our mechanical systems in fairly great detail and do quite a bit of work to get them tuned up, which is continuing and ongoing. So we have, you know, kind of down-to-the-minute type of information that we do continue to receive from our sites. It is not uncommon in the world of bond planning to do what we call a five-year plan, which kind of helps us do priorities for the five-year period. But, you know, these plans are fluid and do need to change over time. And of course, our job is to keep the board informed so that we can make modifications during that time. And then, let's say, in approximately five years, we may want, or the board may ask us, to do another round or an update. And that is not uncommon in the world of bond planning in various districts. I'm sure DLR, because they do work with a lot of districts, can probably also attest to that.
Perfect. Okay, and then my last question is for Ms. Ramos. Can you just kind of get into a little bit about, like, after the board approves this in August? What's next after that?
Yeah, yes, I can, Member President Pritchett. Yep, from there, we start to, because of course, what's going to come with that is the prioritization of projects. So we'll start planning for that to go ahead and start folding in the projects that will, you know, be taken on over the next few years and sharing regular updates, certainly with the board and with the community, that, you know, now we have this plan and, you know, we're going to follow it for the most part, unless there's modifications made like Lee spoke to. And that's pretty common. If we find that we're going to pursue a new ed specification that requires modifications of our facilities for whatever reason in the area, I'm just going to say technology for, we may need to make a modification to our plan. And of course, that will be shared. So basically, it's kind of our roadmap for now spending our bond dollars. And as you heard, based on the assessments that were done in 2019, we know we have a far more need than we have in our current measure. So we'll be sharing those updates. And not to say that, you know, the, this latest measure is going to be all applied to the assessments. There'll be a balance between those assessments based on immediate needs, right? You want to do, take care of those things that create, you know, the most harm to your facilities and deteriorate them far faster because you're not addressing them. So you'll have a balance of those along with some of the ed specifications or what's also referred to as the visioning stuff to support our educational programs. And that will all be decided, you know, by you, of course, our board, as we share that data with you. But yes, it'll be our blueprint for moving forward.
Okay, that's helpful. And then we have a bond oversight committee for our measures Q and R. Does our same bond oversight committee then get rolled over for measure H?
Not necessarily. Our, the request from the board was to go ahead and recruit for our new measure H. And of course, that does not stop our current members from applying and serving on our new bond oversight. And because we have not tapped into those resources yet, we have not formed that bond. We're still working, you know, as you knew, the last, couple of last board meetings, we just approved selling of the final bonds for measure Q. So we're not quite done with those yet. And, you know, we got delayed. We were supposed to be here about a year ago, but with COVID, everything's kind of been delayed by about a year.
Right, okay, great, thank you. Questions, Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I felt like there was a lot of information and, but I also have a lot of questions. So I'm going to try and limit mine. And I think, you know, as I'm digesting this information and processing the equity lens in terms of how it applies to a facilities bond in facilities themselves, trying to reconcile sort of equity as it applies to students and serving the students with the greatest needs. And then trying to figure out, what does that look like with facilities? Because of, we have a lot of schools that are very old. And so I'm just trying to figure out how to reconcile equity when I'm thinking of really old facilities that don't necessarily align with sort of how we define equity in terms of serving the students with the greatest needs. So I'm wondering if you can maybe dig down a little bit into the analysis that you did and help me understand that a little bit more.
Why don't I kick that off? And then I'll ask members of both consulting teams if they'd like to contribute. As Rose said earlier, we're looking at a balance of projects where we have certain needs that we have to address due to health and safety concerns and/or accessibility issues that we are going to be prioritizing because we need to. But then the next level of information we'll be looking at will come from two different factors. One is the sort of student success factors, which are based on the six pedals that Anton talked about. And the second bucket, if you will, is based on this equity index that the team is developing. And I think the answer to your question, which is a very good one, is we don't quite have the balance yet of how much of each of those two other factors will weigh into how we distribute the funding. But those are kind of the three legs of the chair, so to speak, that we are looking at using. And what we're currently talking about with the core planning group is how much influence will each of those three legs of the chair have on the decisions of how to prioritize the first set of projects? So I think your question is a very good one and quite appropriate at this point in time. And I think the answer is, we're still working on it. And I'm not trying to avoid the question. I'm just trying to share with you, you know, kind of where we are in the process.
No, that's very helpful, knowing that it's still sort of fluid. And I guess my other question is trying to figure out what our baseline is in terms of what we'd like to see at every single school site, right? And then, and then where that gap is between what we want to see and what we have and how to fill that gap. So is this where the pedals come in? Are the pedals our baseline? Is that, is that what it is?
I would say that if, in an ideal world, if all of that $3.5 billion were available today, each of the schools would have those pedals filled out. But obviously, with the $750 million that we have to spend, we won't be able to achieve all of the pedals in their full configuration. So the question then is, to your point, you know, how do we come up with that priority list of which schools will receive that first tranche of funding versus, you know, necessary repair work that we need to do? So again, we don't quite yet have the answers, but those are the things that we're talking about. But it is, it's fairly easy to envision that certain schools will receive certain amount of fundings to actually fill in some of the pedals, particularly in schools where student success is an issue due to lack of space resources.
Right, so I'm envisioning equalizing the level, like playing field, as mentioned earlier. And, but I'm still trying to understand what the baseline is and what our reality is so that we can, we can fill that. And then my next question is about, we know that transitional kindergarten is going to be something that is going to become a reality in California in the next few years. So I'm wondering if additional analysis needs to be made relative to the need for transitional kindergarten facilities for four-year-olds? So I don't know if that is part of this whole analysis that will come before us in August for approval.
Yeah, that's new information to all of us. As you know, the governor just, you know, signed that into law recently or, you know, wrote his.
Not yet.
Yeah, so I think that will require another kind of round of data information. The good news is that because of the assessments that were done, as Anton mentioned, we have a pretty good sense of which school sites have additional capacity. But that doesn't mean that the capacity is necessarily even across the board or where we necessarily need it. So we need to have that next level of information to make those assessments. But we do have a good sense of where we have open classrooms, for example. So those would be places that could be fairly easy from a facilities perspective to open programs, just because, you know, we have underutilized classrooms.
Right, and I just want to make sure that those are aligned where the need is, right? So maybe we don't have capacity at some schools, but the need is there. So trying to, trying to figure that out. So I appreciate that. And so in terms of, just two more, two more questions. So in terms of the funds, I think it would be helpful not only to think about how much of the work can be done with bond dollars, but also outside of bond, the bond dollars. There is proposed set-aside funds at the state level for facility, a facilities grant for transitional kindergarten to prepare for that. And also, you know, we heard about this earlier in this year, related, I think, to, you know, HVACs and whatnot to apply for additional funds. I think at the time, we still don't know what the eligibility criteria is or what the application process is. I can't remember exactly the bill number. I think it was AB 841, 741, or something like that. But, but just really thinking about dollars that we can use outside of measure H and folding that into the overall pot of money for facilities, right? I mean, we can use some of our federal dollars as well. So, so just, just really wanting to make sure that we look beyond AB seven or measure H dollars. And then lastly, in terms of sort of updates, I think this is, this is really exciting that our neighborhoods, our schools, our kids, our parents, our community is going to see some real change at school sites. You know, it's, you know, something new coming at the neighborhood school, right? And so I really want to make sure that we have a robust sort of, I don't know, you know, meetings, community meetings, or in terms of how we're going to approach sharing this with the community, how the board stays informed on a regular basis. Again, you have a lot of information. I'm sure when we see the final product, I, you know, we're going to have a lot of questions. So I really want to make sure that that is something that happens on a continuous basis. And then I did see that the meetings with the core group end in June. But I know you're trying to finalize your work in July so that the board adopts it in August. Wondering how we can, how we can keep that sort of conversation going, you know, beyond the work that's being done by DLR. So, so just trying to figure that out. Because this is, this is an exciting time in investing in our facilities. But also, also want to make sure that our community is part of the process and the journey. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Member Murawski?
Thank you. And similarly, you know, trying to process a lot of information here. I appreciate the. I appreciate the, the update. I have been looking forward to, to this update for some time and understand that, you know, COVID threw a wrench in some of our, our ability to do that, that planning. So I have a couple of questions about, you know, just, this is the, the first time we've done a facilities master plan during my tenure here. And I understand, you know, kind of the, the broad board's role as, you know, setting direction for the district and the role of, of staff and the administrators as being decision support to like bring to us kind of key strategic decision points of kind of where we go, how we prioritize things. So I'm just curious, and I'm not, I'm not even sure who, who this question is too, but you know, what, how does the, how does the board's role or feedback fit into this process? I'm trying to figure out, you know, if, if the, I know the, the facilities master plan should support the instructional academic vision of the district. So if the board wanted to push forward, you know, I'm just to throw out, you know, CTE as a major initiative or priority or outdoor classrooms or space for mental health wellness. Or, you know, like any, any of these kinds of threads of priorities, like where does that come into the process or is, or, yeah, I, I'm just kind of, I don't understand the, the board's role in kind of defining what, you know, what the direction is and what the decision points are.
Well, I'll venture to start. Or Rose, do you want to go first?
It doesn't, go ahead, me. I'll, I can follow.
Okay. So what I was just going to simply say was that it's great, it's an excellent question. I do think that we're starting from a place of using the LCAP as kind of our, our normal start, as was said earlier by the RSSC team. And I do believe that the board kind of, as a whole, has had input into kind of that overall process. But I do think that as we start to get our, our priorities together in terms of the three buckets that I spoke about, the student success, the equity and the facilities condition, we'll be coming to you with a list of projects that you will be approving. And I think that's just sort of an ongoing process. And so I would invite you to consider this as really just the beginning of a process that you'll be continuing to engage in over time. And if we need to pull aside another meeting or spend a little time talking about whether we're going to be emphasizing CTE versus food services versus a wealth home center, which are three of those, about six pedals, I think it's, you know, I think that would be something that we could do. But I do think that some of those things are also expressed in the LCAP. And so as we become, as our team becomes more familiar with it and that data becomes sort of entered into the equation, there has been some strategic guidance provided in that way.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess I would appreciate maybe coming back around to that as and, you know, having more, more of those regular updates and, and feedback.
And I can add a little bit more, Member Morowski, if it's helpful. For, I can share that in former districts that I've been in, when we bring to you like these, this three-pronged approach or the three legs is that there's tiers within each one and within each tier, it's defined, like, let's take the student success one. You may say that we're going to need to upgrade all of our science labs because we know our LCAP, you know, I'm just making this up, supports that we know we have a need there. And there may be another tier in there to support agriculture or some other initiative. And so the board may decide, of course, given the resources, that, you know, we really are going to focus that on this, this segment of our, of our grade stands and, or we're just going to emphasize more on science this time or just a combination of such. And so we'll bring you those levels with the information and the dollars attributed to each of those and with the data to support it, like why, why are those there? Why are those rising to the top versus all the others? And that's where the board, you know, you have that discussion and of course, staff providing you with more information behind that. So you can, you know, kind of make some choices also within those, those different tiers, within those three legs. Yeah. So that's the way I've seen it done as well. There, there's a variety of ways we can show, and we'll make it not too complicated so that, you know, the data will support those decisions.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate that. I would appreciate, you know, maybe, maybe there's an example out there, as you, as you say, of, you know, how, how that could be done or how that could be brought back. I just really want to, want to understand. You know, I, I don't think it's our job to be observers of, of, of a process like this. This is really important. You know, I know my community and the, you know, Sacramento community at large invested in believing in, you know, our district to, to make these improvements. So I feel like, you know, and I totally respect that the board should be operating here and I'm not, you know, suggesting that we get into, you know, finding particular projects that we want to advocate for or something. I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's our role. I do think our role is to set that, set that direction and make sure it's kind of the whole plan and prioritization is supporting the district and that we also have, you know, conversations at the board level because we have limited resources on how to prioritize. So I, I appreciate that. And maybe we can follow up on if there are, you know, other examples that you could identify of like kind of what that looks like. That may help me, help us all understand what our role will be like going forward over the next, next year or two. So really appreciate, I, you know, look forward to seeing that, the data can, I just wanted to go back to the, the timeframe of that. I understood from the comments that the data would be available after we adopt the plan. Is that, is that right? For the, the website?
Mark, was that?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. Thank you, Rose. No, no, Member Morowski, the, the data will be available, the data we've gathered will be available to staff around the first, next week, early next week. The, how it, how it communicates to your community through a interactive website, we will bring back to you first for your review and approval prior to that being released is what, is what the intention is. But the data will become available very shortly. In fact, the staff already possesses all of the facilities, condition assessments and all of the, the energy audits that we performed on every one of the campuses, amongst other, other things like technology, safety and security, all of those are in the assessment packages that are available. We can link those into a kind of a draft website, if you will, so that it is accessible to the board and community.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'd appreciate that. I'm really, really curious and looking forward to reviewing that, obviously. Can I just ask, in terms of what the, what the master plan will entail, are there recommendations as to, you know, how to strategically approach? Or is that something that, you know, the master plan just gives us the data and the conditions and we go forward and do that work?
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and just share, Mark, on the assessment piece. You can jump in here. But for the assessment, Member Morowski, the, the, the health and safety component, that's going to be broken up into like immediate needs, what needs to be done one year because otherwise, you know, we are going to, our roof's going to cave in and, and you know, it's going to destroy all of the, the items within. And then you'll have a two-year, three-year so we can start to, to, to chip away at these projects and plan for future bonds because as you know, I mean, we've already said it like 10 times, I think we don't have enough to cover the $3.5 billion. So that's going to allow us to ease into this and then not use that entire $750 million on those immediate needs and use some of that for the educational items as well. And so that's when we come to you, like they described with the, you know, the three buckets that we're going to be addressing with the tiers. And so the tiers for the assessment will be the years by which when we absolutely have to address these items because otherwise we'll get to a point where the, you know, the, the classrooms will not be usable or they'll be very unsafe for students or they won't meet ADA compliance. And so in, in terms of severity, what needs for that component? And then the others, it's just going to depend on the educational goals and the data to support those.
Okay, okay. Wonderful.
Mark, did I?
Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
That's, that's great. Thank you so much, Ms. Morales.
Okay. Well, I just, I just lastly say, you know, in, in trying to think through the, the equity aspects of, you know, how, how things would be prioritized, I, I think it might be worth, that might be worth another conversation to make sure that the board and the community fully understands, you know, what that means and, and how that, you know, how that will be set up to drive our decision-making. Because I think this is, you know, the, this is, it's always a tricky conversation. And I think that, you know, we need to ensure that the board and the community is bought into whatever the, you know, the final draft. Maybe that's the, maybe that's what, what you bring back to the board or something is that, you know, the, the draft, because there's many ways you can set it up, right? Like how much you weigh one thing versus the other. So, yeah, so that's my final comment. I do think that's worth a, worth an additional conversation and just appreciate so much everyone's work on this.
Member Rhodes, did you have your thing up earlier? All right, I'm calling on you.
First off, once again, thank you to my colleagues for their analysis and questions. I think they're pinpointed and important to hear. I, I guess how I start off would say, Anton, you're appreciating my brother. You're preaching up there and I, and I appreciate it. We, we talk about schools and neighborhood schools. I think, like I always say, strong schools build strong neighborhoods and communities and, and vice versa, right? And the conditions of our school sites are an equity issue. They hold historical and racial contexts and equities that are kind of built into our system. And so us tackling these things does align with our equity statement and it's, and it's very important. Also, I would like to say, I enjoy seeing these data points on paper. And I'm glad on June 1st that we're going to be receiving something or the week of the first, we'll be receiving something to the board, probably in a BCC, a board, a board, a BC, a board communication to us breaking down areas of our schools and, and then what, where they lined at, right? We saw on the piece of paper, it said, poor, fair, good condition with little dots. But we don't see the school sites. And I know that all of us want to see the school sites. But me personally, I don't just want to see the dots or the numbers on paper. I would request that Superintendent, yourself, Nathaniel and I go out and actually see some of the sites, especially in Area 5. Specifically for me speaking, I would make that request that we physically go and see it. I think during my tenure here, what is six months now? Has it been six months? There you go, six months. I haven't done a facilities walkthrough necessarily in my area. And I think that that's necessary and, and, and I'm looking forward to it. I'm excited about it. I'm excited about all of our presentations today. Trying to make sure to not get too excited and, and temper this excitement that I hold currently. But not just for me, but for my community, for the district and what we are looking at really doing. So with that on the table, I would like to reiterate my requests after we get the information on June the 1st or the week of the 1st, that myself, Nathaniel and Superintendent Aguilar, that we go and look at some of our sites and our facility walkthrough and especially in Area 5. I also would say all of the board members that are here to also do that in your area. That's all.
Let's do it. Member Shayk, did you have your, your, your sign up?
I did not, but I'll just quickly say that you asked all of my questions, President Pritchett. And I would just underline Member Rhodes' request for a board communication as soon as possible with the information. Because I'm very curious and I think it'll be really important in the coming, however much time to understand how the breakdown goes.
Great. Thank you. Member Garcia?
Yeah, I just wanted to just chime in on Board Member Rhodes' comment and request about visiting school facilities. I think that if there's an opportunity to partner up with other board members from differing areas, that we do that so that we can learn together about each other's needs, especially when some of our communities look so different. I welcome that opportunity.
You must have been reading my mind, thinking the same thing. I think that's a great idea.
I concur.
Fantastic. All right.
President Pritchett, what we'll do just in terms of an immediate response is we will organize sort of an in-person two-buy in the form of visits to school sites, just so that we can abide by Brown Act requirements and treat the two-bys as, as, as a visit to, to those school sites. I just want to very quickly just comment and thank the team for hearing from our board and our community, the importance of getting these equity indicators right. As you know, we've been very committed. The EIIS tool, for example, comes out of our approach to using data to think about how to actualize equity. We are going to be having a workshop here very soon with the board on how we will use some of those indices as we think about the use of one-time funds per the board policy that you passed recently. And in the case of facilities, you know, the fact that, that our team was willing to lean in and, and accept that this is not something that is commonly used or commonly done. I just want to commend our team for doing this very intentionally. And I do think it's important that we keep the board apprised of what elements and the weights that will be associated to the data that we use to run reports so that hopefully our community and our board is proud of how we manage those limited resources so that we can think about what all of our students deserve. And I, I was, I don't want to appear biased. I, of course, have visited a lot of schools and some of them unfortunately feel like they're taking us back to the 1960s in terms of color schemes and the, the facilities themselves and the conditions of pools. I mean, these are, these are very, very serious inequities in our system still that I think we need to, we need to address right away.
Thank you, Superintendent. With that, this is an informational item, which will be, oh, I apologize.
Just really quickly, I wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to request from the superintendent that I also be included in the, in the planning for those visits.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I am curious, Superintendent, like the, the planning of these visits need to take place during this after-school, like during the summer months when school is not in session? Because right now we have kids in small cohorts for, or we have them in, well, actually collapsed cohorts. Anyhow, we have smaller groups at school sites. And with COVID, I'm assuming we don't want a lot of visitors to school sites. And I don't know how that works through, if we're still able to do it while school sessions, or maybe we do it after kids go home during the day?
Yeah. Why don't we just commit to doing it as quickly as possible? And I, I do think that, you know, our return to health plan does limit visitors to essential visitors. And so I think if we can be flexible, it's best for us to do it after our sessions are over.
Okay, perfect. All right. No more questions. With that, this is an informational item, which we brought back to us. We're looking forward to seeing the final product. Thank you again to everyone involved. We appreciate your work. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Moved.
Oh, yeah, sure. We're going to adjourn back in a closed session. Oh, yes, sure. We're going to adjourn back in a closed session. All right, we are back from a closed session. Do we have any announcements from closed session?
No announcements.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Moved.
Can I get a second? All right, student preferential vote.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Good night.